There's no more blue cards.
Oh.
We love our teachers.
Do we ever.
Yes. Approval of minutes, approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meetings. Policy Committee meeting, February 12th, 2018. Finance Committee meeting, February 12th, 2018. Regular P-12 meeting, February 12th, 2018. Advanced Ed meeting, open February 14th, 2018. Z Model Training, open February 26th, 2018. P-12 Study Session, open March 1st, 2018. These are board reports, 17-81 through 86.
So moved.
Support.
Have to do the recommended action.
I thought, sorry. I'm trying to move us along.
Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Thank you.
Support.
Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, unanimous. Next item, please.
Special reports. Read by third grade. Dr. Glenn Maleko.
We're going to have Dr. Chokel come up with her team. And this was actually a presentation that had been requested by the board, I believe, Trustee Elaine at the time presented.
So this is a team report, as you can see. And since this is March's reading month, I brought a book. However, it's longer than three minutes, so I am going to put this aside and not read it. But any young person knows Pete the Cat because it's one of the little people's favorite books. And since this is a month of reading and enjoying literature, we'd like to take every opportunity that we can.
We'll grant you a waiver if you'd like to read it.
What's that?
We'll grant you a waiver if you'd like to read it.
Thank you so much. I'd like to introduce the professionals that are with us today. Actually, all of those wonderful teachers. Can we have a hand for all the teachers, please?
Yeah.
Actually, between the Cotter students doing the Pledge of Allegiance, the GSRP teachers coming up and talking about some of the early childhood initiatives, at least half of our presentation is done. So we're going to move it right along. So I would like to start out by introducing Sue Stanley, who is the principal of Salina Elementary, as well as the Elementary Language Arts Committee co-chair. Nadra Lambert, our early childhood coordinator. Beth Gorman, our instructional coach at both Salina Elementary and Salina Intermediate. And Jennifer Hatfield, who is an early childhood specialist and an early childhood specialist coach. So these individuals here represent the over 400 staff and the 21 building administrators that make up this whole Read by Third Grade initiative. And this is not something that any of us can do alone. So the slide here summarizes the Read by Third Grade legislation, which was passed, as you recall, in October of 2016, and outlined some very specific requirements that all districts had to follow. Fortunately, Dearborn had many of these initiatives already in place. And thanks to the solid leadership and the forward thinking of the board and the district, the changes that we've had to make to comply to the legislation have been relatively minor. So obviously, again, all of our classrooms provide reading instruction. The legislation mandates a minimum of 90 minutes to include the five components of reading. There are required assessments, and while districts have a choice, we've selected the NWEA and the DRA as our diagnostic and as our universal screener. There is a lot of professional development that is provided, individual reading plans, parent education, read-at-home portfolios. And then there are students who can demonstrate their proficiency in other ways if the test scores do not follow the group. So the NWA kindergarten data showed us, for the last three years, that we had a very low percentage of students starting school at grade level proficiency. So this slide here shows that in 14-15, there were only 15% of the students that started kindergarten at grade level. And even with the great efforts of all of the teachers and administrators, by the end of the year, we could only get to 18% proficient. And of course, the flip side of that is that 82% of the kindergartners are going to first grade behind. So we weren't happy with that. The data for 15-16 wasn't much better, but we've started on a wave to change that. So in 2016, we also did a Continuous Process Improvement Committee, which provided some specific recommendations for the district as far as what actions that the district could take in order to not only comply with the legislation, this committee actually started before the legislation came through because we could kind of see it coming, but also provided some specific direction for us to follow. And you'll hear a little bit more of some of their recommendations moving forward. So I'm going to turn this over to Nadra Lambert, who's going to talk a little bit about early childhood.
Well, you've heard all about the GSRP program. I'm going to talk about a few other things. We have an early learning coalition that's made up of not only people from the district, but also the mayor, access, the library, universities and colleges in our area. I'm hoping I'm not missing anyone. As part of the early learning coalition, we have tried to do a lot with the families and getting the children into interventions and just be in the schools earlier. We have really Parent University that the teachers talked about is an offshoot of that, as well as Books for Babies. Books were put in pediatricians' offices and handed to people when they would come in. It gave them information about the school district, as well as a book to read to their GSRP, I don't know if the teachers mentioned that there were, we are in 11 different buildings. Cotter has 10 classrooms, and there are 29 classrooms that are in host schools. Salina Intermediate even has two classrooms servicing our youngest population. The goal is early intervention to get them going early so that they don't come into kindergarten below grade level. We have developmental preschool, which targets a different population, and these are people that choose to put their children in, and it's a paid program, that don't meet the qualifications, they don't meet the qualifications of need, which is for the GSRP program. We have a jump start and a soft start to ease children into the school setting. As part of this, the kindergarten teachers work with, and the Young Five teachers work to get these children transitioned into kindergarten at the beginning of the school year. GSRP teachers are also part of that transition program. In May, we will start meeting, the preschool teachers will meet with kindergarten teachers to put children into classrooms that'll best suit their needs, also to help any struggling students or students that are high and need challenges, so that the teachers know, the schools know, the needs of these children before they come into the kindergarten. The first day of school, the preschool teachers that have had the preschool children the year before, visit the elementary schools. And they will, some are in the, some go, they stay, come outside and tell the kids when they're standing in line to start school that they're going to have a great day. It's their first day of kindergarten, they've made it to kindergarten or to a Young Five program, and they just help to transition. So there aren't quite as many catch-and-release going on in the hallways of the elementary schools. It's been very beneficial. That first day of school has really helped, and we hope to continue it. Sue's going to talk about the elementary.
Thank you. And you know, the teacher in me, I'm feeling for all of you, and I want, almost think we should take a brain break in order to get all this information. So thank you for your attention and for our chance to talk about what we are doing. You know, I really am proud to say that Dearborn, as Dr. Chokel had said, was at the forefront for a lot of reading initiatives and things that we know that we needed to do to get young children ready to read by third grade. And so, again, this initiative just helped us fine-tune and hone in on those specific skills that we know we needed to do. So your support of the early learner is very much appreciated by all of us. So curriculum instruction and that K-1 professional learning, we were so fortunate this year especially to have those kindergarten release days, so that kindergarten teachers could really come together as a one big PLC to talk about learning, because we know that it's what happens in the classroom impacts our children the most. And especially getting those foundations for our earliest learners is really important. So your support for that is really appreciated. The DEC units and us continuing to work on getting quality, good lessons on deck and supporting teachers in finding resources is really important and something that we've been working on a lot. Professional learning, the DTRA really is second to none for reading instruction for teachers. 72% of our K-through-three teachers completed, and not really only K-through-three, but that number is higher because of all the support staff that have taken that as well. We're going to show you a picture in a minute of the DTR cohort 14. 14, so you think of all the teachers that we have trained, that have been trained, is really absolutely phenomenal. Progress monitoring, which we keep getting better at every single year, so that our bottom 30, our kids that have been identified as needing extra support, we are tracking their progress. And as the principal, as the instructional leader, I know I speak for all of my other fine colleagues that are doing the same in their buildings. We know where our students are. We look at their data, and our kids that are struggling most, we know them by name, and we also know what they need in order to help move them forward, and we're tracking that. So along with that, we like to talk about, it's like the medical model, we're a bunch of experts that are coming together, principal is chief of staff, and we work together, and there's that great articulation, so that we've got the TETL-1 coach, the ELD, the ECS, which has been just a welcome addition in our buildings, all working together, along with the instructional coach and everyone else. So we're all speaking the same language for our children's success. And so, and here is the latest picture of our newest graduates for cohort 14 for the DTRA, which again, is wonderful.
With the sign.
Of course.
Right, with the sign. So we're there. Okay, and I'll pass this over to Jennifer.
So I want to talk a little bit about our ECS, or Early Childhood Specialist Model. It is a collaborative approach. We do work in the classroom alongside the kindergarten teacher, and we're working with our bottom 30%. Starting right away, we're doing assessments and moving right into a tiered approach to read instruction. It's a research-based practice, working on phonemic awareness, letter and word work, concepts about print, early emergent and early reading strategies, and also writing. It's focusing on our lowest achieving students. And again, it's a tiered approach, so they receive multiple sessions throughout the day. And if you take a look at our data, this is just a sample, so we start out with multiple assessments, DRA tasks, and this is capital letters. So you can see the beginning of the year in blue and in green. So we're really excited about the progress that they're making. And the same for lowercase letters. And we know that letter identification is a strong precursor to reading and writing. And this is really exciting, the instructional text level. We're getting students into books much earlier with those emergent strategies. And as you can see in the green, two or three is considered meeting at the end of the year. And you can see how many students that are already reading at that level and even beyond that level. And so we have faith that we will continue to progress monitor and be successful.
Hi, I'm Beth Gorman. I'm the instructional coach at Salina Elementary and Salina Intermediate. I have actually been an instructional coach since the very first day, so I've been doing this job for a while now. I'd like to talk just a minute about the importance of the coaching partnerships. We really have a laser focus, and we know exactly what we need to do when we're working with our teachers. And we're working side-by-side with teachers on a daily basis, and we're pushing in and working together for all children, but with a focus on that bottom 30 children. And so we're working together, coming together, filling the toolbox of the new teacher or the younger teachers, and having more experienced teachers try some new things, maybe something that they haven't had before. And we do have that laser focus on the K-through-three. So we do service K-through-five, but we're really thinking about Read by Third Grade and what our important component is going to be in that partnership. We do a lot of professional development and learning at the district level, at the building level. DTRA, I think I've done five times now over the past decade, and just really building partnerships, even in our professional development. Many times, I will have teachers email me about resources or questions and everything after they've attended professional developments to get deeper. And so that's a really, really important focus. Also, MTSS, we're very pleased with the idea that we're always at MTSS, so we're focusing on those children, connecting with parents, classroom teachers, stepping in, modeling for teachers, maybe something that they haven't tried before, and a resource for the MTSS process. And then also parent education, providing workshops, giving parents ideas, resources, books, materials, pulling students from classrooms, having parents and students sit side-by-side and modeling for parents, so that they can strengthen their parenting at home and have some new experiences and some ideas of what to do. And we're just really proud of all the things that we've accomplished in the last eight to 10 years. So finally, we just wanted to talk about our next steps. So we know where we are, and we know where we need to go. Dearborn has always been in the front. We've known what's going on, and we're really pleased that we have so many things in place. So next, we're going to deepen our intent about portfolios. The Individual Reading Improvement Plan, we're working on that. We're also thinking about our benchline assessments, we're getting better. Dan is helping us with that, working deeper into the NWEA and monitoring our progress. We're looking at putting all of these components together and doing that progress monitoring piece, and doing whatever we need to refine and move on the next step forward. So we're really pleased with all the things that we've been doing and very proud of the progress so far, and look forward to more progress. So that concludes our presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Trustee Elaine.
Well, I asked for this presentation. It's really important. My daughter had a friend who was not reading at third grade level by the end of third grade. She had some intervention over the summer, and she's become a successful young woman since then. And it's really important. What I, I have a couple of concerns that I wanted to ask about. First of all, Dr. Maleko, the state mandated this, so I wonder, they mandate this, did they put any money into helping us, like with summer programs?
Very limited, but I'll let Dr. Chokel, because she's been willing to talk.
Yes, the state provided some funds called, under the Early Literacy Grant, for use specifically with K-3 students, and they've done that for the last three years. It is, the amount of money is based on the number of first-grade students in a district, although schools can choose to use this for K-3 as well as professional development. So it's for after-school and summer work. There has also been an assessment grant that we have applied for that is kind of a given that districts will receive it, and so that has offset some of the cost for us of the NWEA.
Okay. And then the next concern I have is if we're going to, I don't know when this kicks in, where we cannot move kids up to fourth.
This year's first graders will be the first group of students that would be officially affected by the mandatory retention part of the third grade, unless a superintendent chooses to exempt, you know, the students from that requirement.
So I'm really glad to hear that we know which students they are. Are we going to be letting those parents know, and how are we going to make sure that we can get them on track?
It's a great question. The legislation does require something called that Individual Reading Improvement Plan. It does require that parents have a voice and participation in the development of that. Dr. Patterson has worked to automate the generation of that, to make the paperwork part a little bit more efficient for teachers, so that the test scores and the assessment results of students will be printed out. And then during regular parent conferences, teachers can meet with parents, share the fact. It's similar to the parent contracts that Superintendent Wiston implemented a number of years ago, where parents, we need to inform them, we need to partner with them. Nobody wants kids to be behind. So the communication about where the students are and what the school's able to do, what the parent is able to do, mentoring kids up with older students who can come in and read, you know, with the little ones, to provide that extra attention and that kind of peer mentoring, all of those, all of those things together will help. There's not really just one single answer and one right way to go about it, but a team working together will pull, will make this successful for students.
So just one last question, if you will, Dr. Reed. I hate to ask this, but do we have any idea, what numbers are we talking about? I hope this isn't going to be a bad shock. What numbers are we talking about across our district, potentially?
For retention?
For retention. Because it's just really traumatic for kids.
Yeah, well, I don't have a crystal ball.
Yeah, I know, but...
However, it ultimately will depend on how many students in third grade at the end of the year behind, as well as the measure that the state is currently using two years from now, and then when those results actually will come out. So that if the state is using the M-Step results, the M-Step obviously is given between April and the end of May, and the results have come out for the last couple of years in August. So the decision about a classroom retention, if it's based on those results, does not give either the parents or the school district a lot of time. We will have data, looking at NWEA and some of the other assessments that we use, far, you know, much, much earlier. I can't say how many students are going to be behind in third grade, because it is our intention to bring as many students up and past grade level as we can. It's a good question, though.
Dozens, hundreds?
I can't even guess. I'm very, very positive, and I want to, you know, my goal is 100% of the students at grade level, but we know that attendance for some of our young people and our families is a concern, because if the kids aren't in school, you know, they can't learn. Our teachers are working, our supports are, we've got teams of adults all working on behalf of the children, and so it is our belief that we will get as many of them to grade level as we possibly can.
Trustee Pettles, call.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions as well. One, according to the Public Act, it does say that you can have portfolios to demonstrate proficiency and other items to substitute if, I'm assuming if we wanted to go ahead and move them up. Who's going to be the judge of that? I mean, is the state going to swoop in and say, hey, you know, if we say, we've got the, we've got the proof, we think that student's competent to move to the next grade level? Are they going to come in if we say we have 500 students that we're passing along who don't meet the M-Step criteria, but we say, well, we've got other proof?
Those are great questions, and the answers are out there. We don't know. It would be very difficult to believe that the Michigan Department of Education has enough people to monitor this themselves. However, if they are looking at the M-Step data, then obviously they're going to be looking at the data on achievement of students. They're going to be looking at what other measures a district may produce to show that students are on grade level, although they might not be showing that on M-Step. And then certainly the number of students that ultimately are retained in third grade and not moved to fourth grade, based on our student data collection system.
Okay, and then the next question is, when I, when I look at the NWA, NWEA results for the kindergarten group in 2017, say, and they had, it went from 11% in the fall to a 25%, and that's still leaving 75% behind.
Right, we did better than the year before.
We did better, we did better, but it's still a sizable number that we're looking at moving into first grade. And then I would assume that, you know, you might improve a little bit. If they, if you don't lose some over the summertime, they slip back, which we know is a problem. So what, in your expertise opinion here, do you think are our biggest challenges and hurdles to accomplish what we're attempting to accomplish? You said that we've already, we're doing much of what the Public Act was proposing, and yet we're still having these numbers that, with a lot of, and we have everything in place. We've had all kinds of support programs in place for the early learners, and we're still coming in with students who are not prepared at the kindergarten level. So if our Great Start readiness programs and all those other things are still not bringing them in at an acceptable level to begin with, what's our greatest challenges that we have to overcome?
Well, our greatest challenge and our greatest opportunity would also be our work with parents. Because again, the early learning coalition's goal is to get with parents and children as young as six weeks, providing books, providing resources, providing, our PTA is a great partner with us on that coalition, and the goal is to provide enough for parents so that they can, bless you, they can continue that work at home with kids, so that when they do bring them to preschool, when they do bring them to kindergarten, that they are more prepared, more students start school at grade level. We have also opened 14 Young Fives classrooms in the district, and what that is doing is it's helping students who have many social-emotional needs, as you heard a little bit from the GSRP teachers. They are in a lower, a class with a lower number of students, and they will move from that Young Fives classroom to kindergarten. And so what that has done is created smaller class sizes. We have the smallest class ratio, teacher-student ratio in kindergarten than we've had in my 10 years in Dearborn. So that has been due to the staff that has been added, and certainly the board has approved on those numbers. So starting, kids who start school at higher levels will obviously achieve at greater levels moving forward. So helping parents with the challenge of getting their children prepared is one of those baseline obstacles and one of those challenges that we're working to meet. And then as students enter our school at different grade levels, working with the families and all of the staff that we have to scaffold that student support.
So are we doing anything differently, since I know we've been having that, those types of challenges for many, many years? It's not something that's new to us. Are we doing something differently?
Well, our full-day kindergarten started, I want to say, seven years ago. And then this year, we have the Early Childhood Specialist in every kindergarten classroom, providing, as Jennifer Hatfield described to you the model, providing additional instruction to these lowest achieving students with the goal of getting all of the kindergarten students to grade level by the end of the year. It's a hefty goal, but our feeling is if we get all of the students in kindergarten to grade level, when they move to first grade, more of them will start at level, and it will be a more successful year, and students will build on that.
Superintendent Maleko.
So just to add, and I appreciate the great presentation and information and the questions by the trustees, just want to mention that I'm on the, you know, I'm on the Wayne County Superintendents Association. I'm also, I had joined, we have a small ad hoc committee on literacy, looking at data of literacy within the county and looking at other models. And so there's going to be more to come from the county, and there's going to be some direction as far as the law goes, but also what can we do? One of the things, though, the county is looking towards us is some of the coaching model that you just saw here, because a lot of districts don't have that, those models implemented. So thank you again to the public and the taxpayers who voted for the millage, because that's how we're able to bring these early childhood specialists in. The other thing is class size. That's another aspect, but we know it's what you do within class size. Since you asked the question, what do I think? I think there's a couple of actually roadblocks for us, and one, the data's clear on summer learning loss. We actually have data in our district that shows that when kids leave the school and come back, their NWA scores drop over the summer, especially at-risk kids. The other thing that I really believe in, again, these are broader issues than just Dearborn, some of them, but I still think we can do some things to advocate for those areas. As you know, I presented to the board that I'd still like to explore the ability to possibly pilot a year-round school, not the previous model, but one that would help kids in extra instruction during the year. The other thing I feel is, I do feel like at some point, you know, a big advocate, it's in our strategic plan, early childhood, I believe there should be universal preschool for all. I think that would have a tremendous impact on not only Dearborn, but across the state and Wayne County. And right now, we can't get everyone in, because we don't have funding for everyone. I commend the team here who jumped right at a couple of extra slots, that we take whatever extra slots we can get. And I said to them, you know, we're sitting there, and there's all these logistics, and I said, what's good for students? So we have a lot of work to do. I'm confident we're going to get there, and I do appreciate the concerns that you're all mentioning, but I also think that some of these are broader things that we've got to work and advocate. I'm going to present in an upcoming board meeting, I talked about the state adequacy funding that came out. That's another factor as well. And trustee Elaine, you mentioned that. Well, that's, yeah, they may have given us this extra funding, but if you look at the grand scheme of things, it's really not that much.
The state's been underfunding education for decades now.
Correct. So I think there's a lot of things we can do, but it does come with resources, and I think we've been leading the way in the district. We've still got work to do. We recognize that. We're going to continue to move forward, and I appreciate the work of the team. And I appreciate, whenever I come, you do give me those pictures with the sign, too. So thank you for accommodating that. But I don't have to encourage you, you guys encouraged me, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, action items. Special consideration of an action item. Are there any agenda items on this agenda? Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
Which items do we have to vote on separately?
I don't think there's any. I didn't see any.
None?
There's nothing.
I'd just like to make a comment as to item number 23.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-three, I'm sorry.
Twenty-three? Yes.
And that's specific as to the potential expansion of the Berry Center. And I would really hope that when we are having those discussions, we did hear from one of the students today who did attend, I believe, DCMSD. And I think that part of our committee and discussions about these programs, and in order to make sure that we do do it right, that the student input, specifically reaching out to the students that are or have been part of these programs, I think is going to be vital for the success of these programs. So I would hope that we do reach out to a lot of these students that are in different programs and get their input specifically when we are looking to expand the center and making sure that these programs succeed.
So we can list every item?
Yes. A motion to approve action items. Recommended action, move that action items one through 26 be approved as recommended in this agenda.
So moved. Support.
Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Trustee Barry?
I'm going to just make some comments regarding 21, high school boundary changes, 22, infrastructure committee, excuse me, and 23, architect analysis at Berry Career Center. These three action items actually go hand in hand. I'm going to, I plan to support all three tonight with the understanding that 21 and 22 are very well closely related. One addresses the immediate, the short-term needs of our district, and number 22, infrastructure committee, addresses the future district needs of our district, which includes the population at the high schools. I know Mr. Mishur and Mr. Tom Walls was thanked earlier. I also would like to thank Mr. David Mustin and Mr. Hassan Jafar. They led the, they led the team, I'd like to thank the whole team. They led the team into the forums with the parents. Speaking of parents, I'd like to thank the hundreds of parents, if not thousands, that attended the forums, reached out to us on social network, blogs, websites. Your voices were heard. This is not an easy decision that we have to make tonight, but in my opinion, it is the best possible decision as of today. It will, we will meet. The only issue I have is, and I'm sure we're going to address it with the long-term needs, is the numbers at Fortson High School still bother me, but we'll get to that and hopefully sooner than later.
Any further discussion? Trustee Thorpe?
One thing I would add to what trustee Barry mentioned in terms of number 22 with the infrastructure committee, you said about high school capacity. I want to make sure that we have eagle eyes all through the district as what's going on with capacity, so we can be well ahead of the curve, whether it's overpopulation at the elementaries or at the middle schools as well.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the mo, is there a motion? All those in favor of the motions indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That's unanimous? I forgot to vote aye.
Summary of agenda action items. Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of additional purchase-level literacy kits. Number three, approval of an award to Prestio Holdings, Inc. in the amount of $64,530. Number four, approval of an award to Prestio Holdings, Inc. in the amount of $56,340. Number five, approval of an award to Plant Moran for a one-year extension. Number six, approval of an award to Prestio, Prestidio, why am I having a problem with that word?
Prestidio.
Prestidio Holdings, thank you, Inc. in the amount of $35,850. Approval of an award to Benchmark Education for Level Reader Books. Number eight, approval of an award to AT&amp;T not to exceed $37,206.32. Approved. Number nine, approval of an award to Turnkey Network Company not to exceed $32,000. Number 10, approval to extend the contract to CIS. Number 11, approval of an award of contracts with Clark Construction per Board Report 17-89. Not halfway through yet. Number 12, approval of an award of contract with Tremco, Inc. per Board Report 17-90. Number 13, approval to extend the Tyco-GCI monitoring contract. Number 14 through 17, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P through 12. Excuse me. Number 18, approval of policy updates, changes per Board Report 17-95. Number 19, approval of the agreement between the Board of Education and the UAW Local 174 Child Care Workers dated February 18, 2018 be approved. Number 20, approval of the first budget revision for 2017, 2018. Number 21, approval of the administrative recommendation regarding the boundary changes for Fortson High School and Etzo Ford High School commending with the 2018, 2019 school year. Number 22, approval of hiring a consultant to approved infrastructure committee. Number 23, approval of architectural design for additional, for addition at Berry Career Center. Number 24, approval of financial statements. Number 25, approval of donations. Number 26, approval of appointment of Director of Business Service.
Poor guy's at the end.
Mike Rangel.
Mike Rangel? Did you want to?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the end of it.
Superintendent Maleko would like to introduce Michael Rangel.
Yes, so he's been waiting here patiently, sort of seeing all the action in our district. I told, the Warrenville might be a little busy, so I'm going to call up Michael Rangel. So if we can give him a big round of applause. He was just approved as the new director, part of the restructuring, and his position is, you know, we had Orstob retired, and Mr. Walls has been doing some restructuring, so welcome.
Thank you very much. No, it was a pleasure sitting through the meeting tonight. I had forgotten, it's been a couple of years since I've been out of K-12, and I'd forgotten how invigorating these meetings can be. And if nothing energizes you, these meetings do, and hearing all those great stories and all the different programs and projects that are going on here at Dearborn, it really makes me excited. First, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to come to Dearborn. I promise I'll give it 150%. I know down the road, we'll get a chance to work together on a lot of different things, so you'll probably be hearing a lot from me. And with that, again, I'm just delighted to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Skip item eight.
You sure?
Yes. So we can go to nine.
Okay. Skipping item number eight. I'll go on to nine. Board of Education Business, A, acknowledgement of correspondence.
We've got a lot of stuff at the table tonight.
I haven't looked at it yet.
But I haven't looked at it yet.
We didn't go through, I didn't go through.
Just on Tuesday, March 20th, at 7:00 in this room, the AAUW Dearborn. Yes, they are going to be awarding three awesome female students from our district, and hopefully we can all make it.
Okay, next item.
Next item, Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
I would like to report on the search for the next president of the college to get all of us up to date with where we are. Okay, so we're going to hire a consultant by the name of David Sherwin. He is from the New Perceptions Group to help us with the selection process for the president. And tomorrow, I am meeting with him, along with Becky Chadwick, to put together some idea of what we're going to do at the next board meeting. The next board meeting with the college, we are going to identify as board members what are the specific criteria that we want for a new president. And then we will, he and I will develop questions after that meeting on Tuesday next week, and we will send the questions out to every board member for their editing and their addition. Then on the night that, that we are going to have the interviews, if you remember, that is going to be March 26.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we meet at 5:00. And this facilitator will also help us go through the process of electing a president. But we won't, he was going to be present for all of the sessions, but he will not interact with us until after the last interview on Wednesday at 5:00. We have the last interview at 5:00, and then we will go into a process of choosing the president, and he will help us go through that process. Okay, let me see, what else? Okay, so every board member is going to receive a packet on each candidate the Friday before the 26th of March. That's the latest, I know it's late getting the packet, but the packet will include, the reason why it's late is because the last candidate will be interviewed on the campus on Thursday before that Friday. And so Friday before the board meeting, you will get a packet that includes information from all the telephone calls that were made to the references, as well as feedback from all the people at the college and the community who these candidates have met with in the next week. So then you'll have a weekend to review all that information, and then we will have the actual interview of the candidates beginning Monday, the 26th, at 5:00. We'll do two. Tuesday at 5:00, we'll do two. Wednesday, we'll do one at 5:00, and then after that meeting, after that interview, we will go through the process of selecting the president. Any questions?
Yes. Do we know which candidates will be meeting at which date?
Yes, that information is on the homepage. You can look at it. I have it here. I think, oh, yeah, it's right here.
No, no, the, on Monday, do we know who we're interviewing at 5:00 and who's at next? That's what I meant, the schedule of.
No, we do not know that yet.
Okay.
Sorry about that. That's something that we need to do.
Yes.
But you do have the information about the people, when they'll be on campus, et cetera.
Yeah.
Okay. So I will get you that information, yes.
Just to add to what you just said, if there are any community members that want to engage in the process, go on the Henry Ford College website. There's information on times and dates when you can actually engage and ask questions of the candidates, and, you know, give some feedback to the board of trustees, too.
Yeah, maybe I should be specific about that. There are public forums beginning March 14th, and Candidate Watkins will be, have, will be, spend a whole day on the campus, starting at 9:15 in the morning and finishing at 7:30 at night. And then on the 15th, it'll be Russell Cavaluna, and he will go through that process. And then on Monday, March 19th, Cassandra Ubrich will go through the process, and then on Wednesday, March 21st, it'll be Michael Nealan, and Thursday, March 22nd, Christopher Reber. And then on Friday, that's when the packets will be put together to submit to all of you so that you'll have information prior to interviewing.
We'll be seeing in-board briefs that we're going over now and making some edits to our school safety information. We thought that that was timely, that we go over the policy, the school safety policy and emergency situation at schools at this time, and also a bomb threat policy. We did also go over the calendar, a policy regarding the school calendar, making sure that we have language in there, that it is in accordance with state law, the DFT contract, and also common, what is it?
Wayne County.
And Wayne County school calendar as well.
Does that include the college, too, college calendar? Or just?
This specific policy committee was for the P-12, and then when we discussed the policy for the college, we'll probably be going over that as well.
Thank you.
We'll request that.
Thanks for your work. That's very hard work, very, very important work, so appreciate the policy committee very, very much. Yes, trustee Elaine.
In addition to those policies, we are also looking at bomb threats and some other ones, and I want to mention that because it's really timely these days, and across the country, there have been students who have called in bomb threats, and some of them here in Michigan are being prosecuted. I know one student at least is facing jail time. So I do want us to mention that we're reviewing school emergencies, expulsion, suspensions, those kind of timely issues on the policy committee.
Okay.
I just wanted to remind the City Relations Committee members that we are having a meeting on Wednesday at 3:30 with the city. So if you have anything else you want to, any of the other board members want me to add to the agenda, I can, but it's going to be kind of a tight, short meeting just to start off the new year.
Okay. Any other committees? Okay, next item.
Next item is Board Member or Superintendent Commentary.
Trustee Elaine?
There are a lot of things that are going to be worked out in, in public opinion in the future as far as school safety. It's a big concern for everybody. But one issue that I want to bring up, I've brought it up to a bunch of different people privately, and I'm just feel like compelled to say this publicly. We, as a board, cannot sit in a closed session under the Michigan Open Meetings Act and discuss security with Dr. Ball or our other specialists. That's an egregious problem now because we don't want to call someone up and ask these type of questions in public. We don't want to discuss, you know, how are we training? I mean, we some, discuss somewhat trainings, and Dr. Maleko has tabletop exercise coming up, but, but there are lots and lots of aspects to this, and I know that in the court of public opinion and politics, these are going to be worked out in the future. But Michigan needs to amend its Open Meetings Act so that we can meet in closed session and talk about security issues. We don't want to talk about this issue in public. We don't want people who are nefarious to get information they're not entitled to. So I really want to urge all of us to bring this subject up when we're meeting with particularly Michigan legislators and ask them to amend the Michigan Open Meetings Act. That's number one. So that's, that's something I want to, I just want everybody to be working on. If you disagree, that's something else, but I do think that the most of the people that I've talked to think that this is something that needs to be changed now.
I agree.
I agree.
Yes, trustee Thorpe?
A few quick items. The Dearborn Area Chamber of Commerce has got their Teacher of the Year Award coming up in a few months, but the deadline for students to nominate their teachers is this coming Friday. So we had several teachers that were up here talking today. This is a chance for the students to give back to their teachers and let them know how much they are appreciated. So that deadline is this Friday, and they can get the applications both on the district website and I believe through the Chamber of Commerce. The Dearborn Education Foundation is going to have their Green Tie event, and I don't remember the date, but I know we got it on the website. But there's also going to be the 50/50 raffle tickets that are going on for that, so buy them from me, not anyone else. And on a serious note, before we meet again as a P-12 board, spring break is going to happen, and I would just ask for all of our students and all of our families, be safe and have fun.
Okay. Trustee Elaine?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Masser?
The Big Read kickoff is at the Ford Center for Performing Arts on Sunday, the Sunday, the 18th, at 3:00 PM, just to let everybody know.
Good. Trustee Elaine?
Now I back up. So I do want to make a quick editorial, and it's already been mentioned, so I don't need to get into a whole lot, but Betsy DeVos was mentioned, who is our Secretary of Education, who has absolutely no job experience before she went into the job. Yeah, I don't need to talk about what a disgrace she made of herself on TV on 60 Minutes. She had not even been into a Michigan public school probably since her... She had not even been into a Michigan public school, probably since her son graduated from the same high school as me. In any case, she is advocating for school choice, for public monies to be diverted to private schools. And we know in Wayne County that there are only eight charter schools that are nonprofit. All the rest are profit-making. So in the Metro Times, I found this when I was in Detroit, there's a nice article, I would urge people to read it. It talks about Mrs. DeVos, it's entitled "The Miseducation of Betsy DeVos." It mentions, by the way, that Mrs. DeVos makes a profit out of some of the changes, and I'm not talking about a few thousand dollars. We're talking about her family making millions of dollars on student loan repayments. So I would ask people to look at this. That's very political, but sorry, we're getting into a really political time. We're spending $230 billion on security. We're going to be a security-only country if we don't change what we do. Ninety people died today of gun violence. We need to change the way we're doing things and get on, get on track to be more productive. Michigan, by the way, since Mrs. DeVos's advocacy for charter schools, Michigan has dropped from the middle of the pack in education to almost the bottom. We're on track to become maybe the 48th state educationally. We have almost no standards for charter schools. Public schools have been what made us what we are, and public schools will be our future. Ninety percent of our people attend public schools. Charter schools have no pensions, no retirements for teachers. So if you have teacher love, think about whether your teachers deserve to retire and live a decent life. I would ask people to become engaged politically in the future on behalf of public education.
I think we need to extend the meeting, but in the meantime, can I vote for you for the state legislature?
I know we're not going to need it, but I offer a motion to extend tonight's meeting 15 minutes.
Second? Oh, yeah, I got to ask. All those in favor?
Roll call vote. Hussein Barry, yes. Abdulhamud?
Yes.
Mary Lane?
Yes.
Sylvia Nasser?
Yes.
Mary Petchikoff?
Yes.
James Thorpe?
Yes.
President Mead?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous.
Okay, so, next item?
Request for information and future agenda items.
Trustee Lynn?
I'll be quick on this. I heard, we have an outstanding Arabic language department. I know Dr., I think it's Dr. Hamami at Fortson is the chair of that department. And I just heard from someone that there was a Chinese Quiz Bowl, and I know that Northville High School won the competition. So I was asking myself, where's the Arabic Quiz Bowl, and why isn't Fortson taking home all those honors? So I just wondered, Dr. Maleko, if you could find out anything else about that? Perhaps there's also a German Quiz Bowl? Because I know the Edsel teacher, Harris Ador, is highly regarded. So if you could find out some more just about those competitions for our students. Thank you.
Trustee Hamud?
I did also just want to make a quick comment. I would also vote for you, trustee Lynn. We really are at a time where this administration, this current administration, has literally waged, waged war against our public education. And we have to all be ready for this battle. It's very unfortunate. And listening to all the teachers today and all the students that came in support of these teachers, the resources that they provided them, we need to keep on arming our teachers with resources instead of weapons, really, is what they need to help these students. As to the request, I was very happy to hear about our 90% graduation rate for ELL students. I would, I do know that we get some data from HFC in specific as to our college readiness from our, for our students. Is there any way that we can receive data as to our ELL students' college readiness and how they perform in college when they graduate from our schools? I know that we're able, we'll probably be able to get that data from HFC. I'm not sure if we can also get that data from different universities.
University of Michigan's been difficult to get any data. Wayne State has been cooperative, so it just depends on which. I know trustee Barry, last year, you requested some similar, not on EL, but we'll, we'll try to reach out and see if we can get some of that. But Wayne State has been cooperative. HFCC, obviously, a partner, and I put some recent data from Dr. Nealan. We had our team over there in board briefs, not on EL, but just on remedial classes and how our students are performing. Generally, our students do better than students from, from Dearborn. We still have work to do. We actually, Dr. Nealan is very excited because he, he works with Ms. Peterson in the committee, both in math and literacy, on trying to connect, you know, the students that are going from the P-12 into the college. And again, those certain students going for a certain track. But generally, what he presented is that although we have room for improvement, our students do better and have less remedial classes than students coming from other districts. And I did include that in board briefs the other week on 3-1. But we can, we didn't look at, or we didn't disaggregate the ELL students, so we can do that as well.
Thank you.
Trustee Barry?
I'd like to thank the Dearborn Education Foundation for their donations, especially the generous donations to Stout Theater Sound System and the Salina Auditorium Sound Systems. I would just like to get an update on where we're at there, Dr. Maleko, with Salina and Stout. I know we addressed those issues at the high schools, so.
I think, Mr. Tom, Mr. Grzinski, is he still here or no? Oh, no, he, okay, yeah, all right. He's working on it, I know with the principals, and I believe what we had them do is prioritize. And I think, Dr. Mosalem, you had reached out to Mr. Lawera as far as Salina, and I believe that he had reprioritized that as one of the items he would like to see. So Mr. Grzinski will work with those individuals to get that done.
Especially that we have a major event coming up at Salina.
Yes, yeah, and I think Mr. Lawera prioritized that. So it's been on our, I've also had this on our cabinet agenda and hasn't come off, so that it keeps it going, and we'll have a follow-up on that, for sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
Next item?
Future meeting dates. Do you have a policy?
No, we do policy every other month at the college level.
Oh, okay, thank you. I was just, usually that's the first thing I read, so, okay, thank you.
The C, well, we have to switch for the 26th, 27th, 28th, and remove the April 2nd.
C or B?
C, he's on it.
Remove C.
Oh, add to B and remove C is what you're saying.
We meet the 26th, 27th, and 28th?
Yeah, so that's additions to B.
Yeah, but the separate meeting. And then remove C.
Remove C. Yeah, that's what, okay, thank you. Future meeting dates: Monday, March 19th, 2018, Henry Ford College Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 PM at the Henry Ford College Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosna Boardroom. Monday, March 26th, 2018, Henry Ford College Special Board of Trustees Meeting, 5:00 PM at the Henry Ford College Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosna Boardroom. Tuesday, March 27th, Henry Ford College Special Board of Trustees Meeting, 5:00 PM at the Henry Ford College Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosna Boardroom. Wednesday, March 28th, 2018, Henry Ford College Special Board of Trustees Meeting, 5:00 PM at the Henry Ford College Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosna Boardroom. Then Tuesday, April 10th, 2018, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Frenchy Boardroom.
And 218, isn't that April 9th? Oh, it's Tuesday because we're, ah, I got it. Okay. Anything else? We are adjourned.